Okay, good evening. The meeting started at 6:30. We entered into executive session under general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. We came back out a minute ago, and now we have the regular portion of the meeting. Can we have another roll call, please?
Yes, all of selectmen are present, as is Town Council Bowen and Town Administrator, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Rich, why don't you leave us on the pledge? Thank you much. Announcements, Alan?
I'm not really sure. I think it's breast cancer awareness. I know it's a week where day, but town halls, I think, are celebrating tomorrow.
(Inaudible).
It is on. I'm just not close enough to it, Bob, sorry. So again, tomorrow at Town Hall, if you go in, if you could wear pink, that would be nice. I'm partially colorblind, but I think my shirt is pink.
It's more orangey, but...
Hey, as close as I can figure it.
Nice try.
Thank you. Next item, Wareham Garden Club. They are selling cookbooks as a fundraiser for scholarships and maintaining gardens around town. All receipts are from club members, oh, recipes, sorry, are from club members. I think Sandy's recipe for fudge is the last one on the list. Cost is $14. For sale at St. Patrick's Hall on High Street, November 5th, from 11 to 1 o'clock, or call 774-766-0045 to order. I have a copy of this for each one of the two newspapers, because for some reason, the Garden Club never reached out to the newspapers. One's for you too, Frank. You can get it later if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Patrick?
All right, I just wanted everybody to know I'm wearing a hat and stuff today. I came from Boston, had a meeting before this, and couldn't get home in time to get changed, so I apologize for my look. Secondly, Alan, I heard it was grumpy old man day today, and I want to know, I didn't get a single kudos or anything on Facebook about it, and I think I deserve it, don't you?
I got enough, so I give you this.
I'm all set.
Okay, thanks. Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing? Judy, anything in the folder?
Yes, I do. There's a virtual craft fair at Upper Cape Tech to benefit the parent-teacher organization. You can order online until October 31st to buy your holiday crafts, and then there will be curbside pickup November 21st and 22nd. If you're interested in participating in that, go to the Upper Cape Tech website, please. Police and family-wide MCA is doing a trunk-or-treat on October 31st from 2 to 4. They are asking for donations of non-perishable foods if you choose to. That's not part of what you have to do, but of course, they are collecting now for Thanksgiving. On October 24th, from 10 to 1, there's a craft fair at Church of the Good Shepherd with crafts, wreaths, Christmas arrangements, knitted items. The rain date is the 25th, and again, it's in the parking lot. Social distancing and masks are required. Every Thursday, Good Shepherd, from 4 to 5, there's a free meal. Just go to the parking lot, and the food pantry is open on the first Tuesday of the month from 3 to 5. To register to vote, October 24th, in this parking lot here, between the two buildings, between 2 and 4, and then 7 to 8, you can register to vote. You'll be outside, and you will be masked and having social distancing. And then the last one I have is, again, the Friends of the Wareham Free Library are sponsoring the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This is a program where, for $25 donation from you, me, or whoever else, any child who lives in Wareham from the age of birth to four and a half years gets a free book every month, as long as somebody is participating. It's an absolutely great program, particularly for kids who may not have daycare available, and if you think about it now, books are probably one of the most interesting things inside. Applications to sponsor a child or to become part of the program are available outside of the town clerk's office at the Ontet Bay Association, and you can also call the library and just ask for a curbside delivery of the form. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick things. We are in the election now. Early voting is taking place over at Town Hall, and you can still request a ballot by mail if you so desire, if you'd rather vote that way. The polls, of course, will be open as they always are on Election Day, on November 3rd, so you've got options here. There's really no excuse not to vote. A lot of people put their lives on the line, and a lot of people lost their lives, so we could have this right. So the only way to respect their memory properly is to vote when you have the opportunity. Second thing is, we continue to see occasional inquiries about Halloween. I just want to reiterate that this board has no plans one way or the other with regard to Halloween. I would make note that the Board of Health has independent jurisdiction from the Board of Selectmen when it comes to health issues, but I would think that we would hear from them if they had a particular concern about Halloween at this point. I haven't heard anything. The Town Administrator hasn't informed me that he's heard anything from them either. You know, if people are going to trick or treat, you know, please be responsible, be careful, you know, maybe make the mask out of the costume. There's a lot of different things you can do with a mask as far as a costume goes. So that's all we've got. Citizens' comments. Is there anybody here to speak to the board tonight? You again.
I'll go first.
Well, you're up for your license as a separate agenda item, so we don't have to have you come up for that. So come on up. I'll wait till your petukas hits the seat, and then I'm hitting my timer.
Okay. Well, I want to compliment you, because I think the two-minute limit is probably in everybody's best interest.
Yep, okay. It's going. Start talking.
The only reason I'm using the citizens' comments as opposed to getting on the agenda was the last time I tried to get on the agenda. It took two months, and that was about the future of the Marine Resources Commission.
What brings you here tonight, Don?
And I'm not on there for that tonight. What I want to do is just give you a handout, and that's the only one I'll give. I have a lot of support material if you want to extend the two minutes, but I won't get into that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's just, what I handed out is just a timeline of what transpired from the time we tried to go forward with getting dredging. And last week, I heard a couple of individuals basically say that they were in favor of dredging. And one of the things that I'd like to say is that I looked at, went back, and I just confirmed that when we tried to, when I tried to put forward a citizen's petition to hire a dredging consultant, it was voted 4-0-0, meaning that all the selectmen that were present said that what was in the Article 6, which was Gary Buckminster's normal request for money to be transferred, was that Article 19 that I had put forward as a citizen's petition included the words "hiring a dredging consultant." And I won't get into talking to Rich Bowen here and show it to him, but I never found that in there. So I went forward. That's not two minutes, is it?
Yep. Believe it or not. Okay, I'll be like the moderator at the presidential debates. I'll give you another 30 seconds.
Okay. Essentially, what I'm saying is that that was not the case. It was misrepresented. I went to the meeting for the town meeting, and I presented and handed out a page that basically said that wasn't the case. The second night that I was there, because that had been handed out the first night, Town Administrator came to me and said, "We will compromise and get that included." And then the other day, last week, I received a note that it's not going to happen. So whatever I said before about being snookered, apparently, is now the case. And you blame COVID-19, but if you look at that timeline, you will see that there was a lot of foot dragging and a lot of not doing what the taxpayers wanted. And I'll conclude at that.
Thank you, Don.
And the two minutes, boy, that went fast.
It does go fast.
Thank you.
You need to, you really, when you're limited to this amount of time, I've learned you've got to use bullet points.
Excuse me?
You have to use bullet points. You have to show up with an outline of what you want to say and use bullet points. You don't even speak in complete sentences.
I can give that to you now.
Oh, I know. But you can do it quicker. I have faith in you. I know you can.
Thank you, and I will do that probably next 10 times on here.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I might have to speak twice. I might need to do a citizen comment separate from the...
Okay, is this in relation to...
To voter intimidation and bullying?
Well, yeah. Come on up.
Two minutes.
Yep.
Hi there, my name is...
Same for you. I got to be consistent here, so...
You're going to have to sit down and make sure that you speak into the mic, please, Christina.
My name is Christina Lisa Burbank. I'm here to talk about invoter intimidation right now, and as an abused, neglected orphan adopted into this nation, I think we really want to be careful about informing our people their options to vote, but when we start talking about how people died for their freedoms, we've crossed the line. It feels like we're guilting and shaming people into voting. I'm super sensitive to that, and so I just, before I got up to speak about anything else, I had to address that. It was a pink elephant in the room, and it's not just that I'm speaking for myself, it's all the other homeless, abused, neglected orphans, LGBTQ, disabled, diseased people who are not able to speak up for themselves, who are in a position where we're having to see on lawns and lines these conversations about how people are dying for our freedoms, but here we are systematically abused. So I just, I thank you for providing the information.
Thank you.
That, how we can vote, and thank you for allowing me that time to say that.
Yep, thank you. Okay. We don't have any, oh, board comments. Alan?
We had our bi-monthly LGAC, which is Lieutenant Governor, et cetera, today, and I was really kind of concerned that we were going to get reversal and go back to step one. Thankfully, nothing much happened. There was really nothing new in the announcements from MMA, or from the state, or from the Mass Selectment, Select Board Association. So that was my positive for the day.
Good. Patrick?
No more.
Judy?
I'm all set, thank you.
Jim? Board comments, anything?
We're on the comment period there?
Yeah, free-range time.
Yeah, I had spoken to you earlier about, you know, meeting with private groups and, you know, proponents for projects or whatnot, and again, I just want to say that I believe it's in the best interests of us as a board to meet with these proponents as a board in open discussion and not individuals. So I hope we can do that in the near future, and as we move forward, do it on a regular basis if conversations do want to, if the proponents do want to have conversations with us, let's do it as a group of the Select Board.
With regard to the specific project you're talking about, they would have to come before us and do a presentation regardless.
I mean, just...
But, you know, I will say that it's not atypical for proponents to try to meet with individual leaders in government and so on and so forth, to try to get feedback sometimes in advance of finalizing what their plans are, so that they can get a sense of, you know, what the sticking points might be for a majority of the people, or is it just one person that doesn't like something? Is it four people that don't like something, so now they've got to adjust their plan before they come forward it? I know what you're saying, because what you're saying is, you know, you're concerned about the appearance that deals are being made behind closed doors, and, you know, that's always a concern when you meet with people. But the flip side is that you can actually get things done more efficiently sometimes, waste less time, and come up with whatever proposal that's going to be eventually proposed to the deciding body through that process than the public process as well. So I don't think it's inappropriate to do so. I think it's inappropriate just to meet one-on-one and then not have that public meeting with all five of us to take place before any decisions are made, before anybody, you know, decides, for example, if they want to warrant the article, if they want to call a special town meeting for something, whatever it is. So I think it's in the ordinary course of how government does business, so I don't think it's that unusual.
I just want to say, I disagree with it. It's technically not illegal. It suggested you're better off not to than to, and this wasn't the first time with this particular proponent. I'm not saying one way or the other, good or bad, it's just my outlook on the actions and how we as a board should operate, and I would like to know, you know, what they're saying to you and you're saying to them, and you can hear what I got to say, and they can hear what we have to say, and...
Oh, that's going to happen.
No, well, no, but, I mean, as we move forward, so we're all on the same page, and I think that's important. It doesn't have to be open to the, it should be open to the public, but not to participate to the point where it's a public meeting or hearing for the public, just so that we can have discussion in that format.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
There will be. That much I can assure you, that it's not going to end with individual meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything. We don't have any appointments, reappointments, or interviews. There will be some appointments on the agenda for next week. We'll talk more about the appointing process down below under the item. But that brings us to licenses and permits. I understand we have an applicant for a fortune teller's license.
We do, from Christina Lisa Burbank. Would you like to...
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us what you would like to do and where you'd like to do it, and get some free publicity for it?
Um, that's interesting. I am just an abused, abandoned orphan adopted into this nation, and I'm trying to just live my life, and I don't think of myself as a business. I don't think of it as free advertising. I'm just trying to save my life and have a forum to speak in my own home, in my own town, in my own nation, where I haven't been before, and I so appreciate you taking the time on the six, Mr. Allen, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Judith, Ms. Judith, Mr. James, Mr. Peter, Mr. Derek, Mr. Richard, to take a stand and look at these laws that stand in our books that don't serve justice quite the way we planned for the people that are homeless and abused and neglected and cannot get to the places they need to go, and they need to tell their own future. They can't even make it to school. It's not safe for them, for their color, for their race, for their gender. So, yeah, I just want to keep doing what I'm doing, try to recover the nations and the families that I've lost, and doing my work, trying to stay alive and play my cards and share other people how they can play their cards if they ask. But there's boundaries and free will involved, and I don't want to invade people's spaces with advertising that they haven't asked for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, we have a motion on the license application?
Yes, I just want to make the comment that Mr. Bowen and myself made up a, probably the simplest license application that the town has ever issued.
Oh, my God. I just, I was astounded that day, and then looking at the license.
And actually, I was educated upon some of the rules and regulations that you were speaking about. However, I would make motion to grant Christina Lisa Burbank of 21, of 211 Ontet Avenue, a fortune teller's license under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 185, and the fee has been paid.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, a second by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We will sign the license tonight. It will be available for you to pick up tomorrow in our office.
Middle of the day, probably.
Yeah. Give them the morning to get into our box and go through all our stuff that we do tonight, but after lunch, it should be available for you, and good luck going forward.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Everything you do.
I look forward to collaborating with you whenever you wish, and...
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, town business, COVID-19 update. Do we have much? Anything new, different? All right. You multitasking over there?
So in the past two weeks, we've had a total of 22 new confirmed cases. So that's since October 5th. There are currently 28 active cases. Since September 1, we've had 47 cases, so, you know, 19 have recovered. There's been no deaths, but we're spiking again, so it's jumping. And, you know, with last week, we, one of the things I think I need to bring up to the board is, last week, we made the, we talked about how these meeting rooms require masks and stuff, and then last night, we had a board where none of the members were wearing a mask. If it's okay with the board, and it's, I'm going, if they're okay with me reaching out, I'll reach out to the chairman and let him know that if they're unable or unwilling to wear masks, this facility is not open to them. They'll have to do their business via Zoom.
I make a motion, and we make it...
Why don't we, you know what, I would hold off on that under COVID, and I would do that under 48-hour business, because I would like to have it applied to all meetings here.
Okay.
Huh?
Disability disability.
Yeah, and the disability has to be a demonstrable disability, not a made-up one.
That's fine.
But, and I, and I want the door, I think we want the doors posted to that effect too, that everybody in here for a meeting has to wear a mask.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Absolutely.
Alan?
No, I think not only just this room here, but I think any room that's a public room, even in Town Hall, multi-service, and it should be standard for everything.
Well, actually, well, we're kind of getting into a little bit different, a couple of different authorities here. I mean, the Town Administrator can make that a rule in any of these buildings anyway.
Right. My thing was, I'm talking to a board or committee, and usually, that's coming from the...
The selectmen.
A selectmen, so, or...
I'll bring it up under 48-hour business. Patrick, could you make your motion there?
Those are the maripoy t's, so, yes.
Yeah, but as far as town offices, you know, in Town Hall and everything else, that's within his ability and purview to issue that order, as well as the Board of Health.
I just want to say one thing, it's, you know, this thing about the mask is, some people don't believe masks work, some people this, that, or the other thing, but you know what? The way you got to look at this is that, first off, you make everybody feel more comfortable by wearing the mask, and secondly, if it doesn't work, there's no skin off your nose by putting the thing on your face.
Well, maybe a little. They do kind of chafe after a day, but...
Well, I'm not talking about physical. I mean, it doesn't hurt to use it, you know what I mean? So just do it. I mean, what's the big problem here? Why does it have to be a big issue? I just don't understand why it becomes such a big thing. I just don't.
You know, your grandparents were asked to go off to war, you're being asked to wear a mask. Come on, people.
I know. I mean, you know, what's the big deal?
Alan?
You know, we can go ahead as a board for the committees that we appoint, actually, appointing authority of the moderator, the chair, and the chair of that particular committee have to make that themselves.
No, they only appoint people. We can, this is actually known as the selectmen's room, and I think we're going to plant our flag right here.
You can, but I know from a prior experience, and Rich can chime in if he wants, that those particular boards can't ignore the selectmen.
No, I don't think they can, but what do you think, Rich?
I know they can.
Ask Rich.
You know, I'd be pretty disappointed if the board pushed back, and we had to go through legal mechanisms on this.
I'm just saying, just so you know.
Rich?
Knowing the moderator as I do, I have no doubt how she would vote, and the other members of this committee are either going to be you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Pigeon, so...
Or Mr. Barrett.
Or Mr. Barrett.
Well, or Mr. Barrett. I don't know how Mr. Barrett would vote on this, but I think he'd be outvoted.
Okay.
We're going to do this under 48 hours?
Yes.
So we'll get back to it.
Yes, we will. Anything else under COVID-19?
No, I believe we're just going reconvene for the emergency response team just to have a couple of conversations on this with the way we're trending and see what we can do, whether we have to go back to outreach and informing people. It was brought up at the MMA's meeting today and about help and such. I think the DOR had an interesting take of, well, just spend the CARES Act money, you're getting reimbursed for that, but I think there's, and that there's retirees available, but I think they're not realizing how hard it is to get somebody on sort of the off-hours, the evenings, the, you know, the weekends, that when you get a call in there to have somebody come right down and investigate a business at that moment, so.
Yeah, and the other thing is too, is, you know, as Derek says, the town can't be everywhere at once. We can't monitor all the businesses simultaneously. If you see something that gives you pause, the safest thing to do is not go in, you know, trust your instincts, and this applies to more than just, you know, virus situations, it applies to life. You know, if the hair starts standing up on the back of your neck, head the other way. I mean, it's, you know, it's in every horror movie. Come on, folks. So don't force yourself into places you don't want to be just because it's inconvenient. If you don't think it's safe, don't go in, and, you know, try to be respectful to each other. Try to keep the social distancing up too, even when you're wearing the mask. As you can see, you know, we've got the masks on, we've got a physical barrier, and we're just about, I mean, in some instances, we're more than six feet apart. I think the two sitting closest right now are me and Jim, and we're just about six feet apart. We're wearing the masks, so you can, you know, you can do both, and that's really your best option, is keep your distance and keep a mask on, so let's be smart, people. Refuse update.
What do you want to do?
I see the looks going back and forth. I'll lean back so they can...
(Inaudible) refuse.
Yeah.
Well, I'll kick it off. Well, I think we're on our own as far as what we're going to do related to transfer station. I know Mr. Sullivan put together a pretty good business plan on how to pay for a combination of the two, and we're going to have to act on that, you know, once we look at it and get some feedback on it. I've looked at it, and I'm pretty happy. I've looked at the, what's it, 2020 I keep calling it, the article that you pulled out of the bylaws, someone else's bylaws, and...
Yeah.
You know, it's a good place to start, and I think we need to take action on these things and move forward. I think as Selectman Tropiano had said, sooner than not, and, you know, I don't think we can just keep pushing it off to make a decision and wait till between December 25th and January 1st. I think we need to take action on something like this sooner, and how we have to do it, move in the direction to get it done so that we can plan, the plan can be put in place.
Yeah, I think with the, obviously, with timelines and such, but considering the COVID delay for town meeting, we actually can't wait for town meeting action because we don't know when that's going to happen.
happen. And our deadline to have something in place is essentially, you know, the...
Ticking away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, January 1, we have to be up and running, so... Although we might declare it a holiday till the second, so...
Well, just because the public may not listen in every week and may not have been following along, what is it that we would be seeking and from whom in order to put this plan into effect? Just one of you can just break that down.
Well, that's interesting, because we received an email from somebody talking about they would prefer a transfer station. They talked about how lovely Benson Brook is. Benson Brook is not an option. That is Marion's facility, right? That's not... We wouldn't have any control or any availability for that. What we're talking about is the Route 28 facility that's right over the line in Rochester. And Carver, for... Had whatever vote they had. I don't know what it truly means. I think tomorrow night, we'll get a... We have an idea, but I think we'll get the real picture tomorrow night at the CMW meeting.
I'm still waiting for the agenda and stuff, unless I misplaced it.
Okay, so...
They don't believe in this 48-hour stuff, do they?
No, they're good. I'm just... Go ahead.
So, yeah, my understanding was there's supposed to be a meeting tomorrow night. I informed my wife I'd be home late, so if there isn't, she'll be happy. So, we need to figure out, because it's going to be... If we're going alone, no problem. We'll figure it out. We're going to make it work. We've got a plan, and we just... We don't want to be stopped on it. I think that's the main point.
Okay.
It was... Go ahead. Sorry. I just... The plan that Derek put together was based on Wareham residents only. So, it didn't include anything from Carver. It would have just been a bonus to the number of users, which would help offset the cost of operation. So, I think, as it's presented, the more people we can get to join, you know, to buy into both, the better off it would be for everybody as far as the numbers go, and it'll drive down the cost of the curbside for everybody, and also encompass the use of the transfer station as a pay-as-you-use. So, I mean, if you got all 8,200 technically, the number would be, what was it, 333?
Yeah, I think it's...
By his calculations. Plus, you'd have the use of the transfer station. You'd have to pay for the disposal aspect of it. That's not a bad deal. And the less users you have, the less number of homes you have, the per-house cost goes up for the curbside. And then, of course, the transfer station users only would pay the fee we charge, which we're estimating to be like 125, estimating, plus disposal costs. So, I, you know, I personally, I would... I am going to get the package deal if this goes forward. I'm going to get the curbside, and along with that would be the use of the transfer station, I believe. Am I correct, Mr. Sullivan?
That's the plan.
Okay. Comments? Alan?
If we can, you know, we need to move forward. I know Derek was talking to one of the disposal companies about a potential January 1 possible, which I think is optimistic. But I'm averaging five to seven calls. I'm hitting people that I'm walking somewhere, and I'm not out like I normally am. Asking specifically, what should I do? Do I have to go hire a private contractor, et cetera? So, there's a lot of, you know, people out there really confused as to what to do and where we're at. And, you know, I'm under the impression that last week, we basically made the decision we were going to try and do both.
Yeah.
I think the curbside pickup, we can go ahead and put that in place and move that forward as far as the transfer station, as long as we can get everything, you know, signed and make it so we can go ahead and use the facility, then obviously we should, because there is a demand for it. But at the end of the day, that curbside pickup is going to be critical as the main piece, because we can control that right now.
Yeah.
We can't quite put our hands around the transfer station yet.
No.
So, that's my two cents.
No. The vote was to proceed on the parallel track with both, though, to do what we could, to present both options to people, so... Well, it's going to stay on the agenda until it's...
Has to be.
Over and done with, and everything's completed, so...
And we have to have a process in place as how we get there.
Yeah.
Is it by choice? Is it by town meeting vote at a special town meeting, just to discuss that and vote on that? Is it... How do you enforce people to utilize the services? So, it's... We really need to move forward with the plan on either town meeting. I don't know if the Board of Health can do any enforcements or requirements. Maybe our town attorney could enlighten us on that. I don't know. I mean, we have to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, of course, I'd need to know exactly what we were going to do, but generally speaking, I think what you'd be talking about would be a Board of Health regulation that would mandate what people would have to do.
And that would probably be our... The fastest and...
Simplest.
Well, yes, because all it would really require would be one or two Board of Health meetings, and if there was a positive vote, publishing the regulation in the newspaper, and then it becomes effective.
What about requiring people to pay the fee for the contracted town curbside pickup?
I'll have to take a good look at that, but I think you would probably be talking about a health regulation if that was the way you were going to go with it. But I'll look at it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Alan?
Again, my experience up in Clark County in Nevada was that Clark County, through the Board of Health, et cetera, put regulations in that Republic was basically the company they chose for all of Clark County. And whether you liked it or not, you were in the system. If you didn't like it, it's kind of too bad, because I'm only out there, say, four weeks a year, but I have to pay every quarter, no matter what. And I'll repeat, I said it before, if I don't want to pay, it's on my tax bill, and they answered us, which I hate, I hope we never have to say, we'll just take your house if you don't pay for it. So, I mean, it's there, and it's common all over the country that this is how they do it.
Yep. Okay, then. Well, this is something that I think you, Derek, and Rich might want to sit down and try to amplify on a strategy here to, you know, is it a Board of Health regulation? Or does it have to be town meeting? Is this considered a form of taxation? Is it a fee? You know, what are the parameters here you're dealing with, and who's authorized to get it done?
And that's why I'm anxious, not anxious, but to move it forward so that if we did need to go through town meeting or a special town meeting, we can pull one together.
Yeah.
Especially a special. Again, I don't want to wait till the week between Christmas and New Year's. This is something that...
No, we need to figure this out by next week, because if we have to call a special, what is the timeframe to call a special? About three and a half weeks?
Yeah.
Roughly? Between keeping the warrant open and then the... What is it, 14-day state notice?
14 days on the state law.
So, you're talking, you know, three-ish weeks, something like that?
Yeah, we just say 30 days on it with the...
Yeah, because that's... I think when we did the special town meeting for the marijuana zoning, it took about 30 days.
I don't think we have time for that. I think Rich is right. I think it's a Board of Health issue. Get them to vote it in. They can do it in a couple of weeks. It's over and done with.
Okay, well, in the mean... You know, for the next... In the next week, you know, the people that are involved in this, if you could come up with that strategy, and then we can, you know, under this heading next week, we can vote to request the Board of Health to adopt the regulation.
Yep. That's what we do. We send it down there and let them adopt their regulation. They have a meeting tomorrow, actually.
Wednesdays.
Well, if somebody wants to say something under 48 hours, I'll take it. So, when we get to 48 hours, if somebody wants to make a motion or request that they at least look at this...
I make a motion that we ask them...
Well, we'll do it under 48. I want to put it under that just so that...
Oh, you're not 48 hours yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll make a note.
Do we need a motion on that? Why don't we just go ahead and do it?
To request the Board of Health? Yeah, it's an action of this board. Yeah, I want a motion. So, we'll do it that way. Judy?
I was planning to attend that meeting tomorrow, personally, anyway.
Okay, you can be the messenger if...
I can be the messenger.
If there's a vote to request that.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Anything else on refuse? Okay. Discussion regarding Board of Selectmen policy for committee appointments. This came on here... Some interesting things happened last week, and I'm not going to get into the specifics. But I learned even more about committee appointments than I thought I already knew, and I thought I knew quite a bit. But as it turns out, I didn't know at all, and I'm not sure anybody knows at all, because you've got different sources of law in different places that talk about not only how people get onto committees, but how you get them off. And what I would like to do is come up with a selectmen's policy that's inclusive for all of the boards that we appoint. Obviously, it wouldn't be applicable to the appointing authority, because they can set their own regulations. You might want to encourage them to, you know, do something similar, just so that everybody's on the same track. But I think what's important here is for both the committee and our office to be working off of the same checklist. I think the policy is one thing. I think the checklist is going to be what gets, you know, things done more efficiently. Everybody will be on the same page, and everybody will know what they need to do in order to put somebody on a committee or to remove somebody from a committee. So, I just wanted to... I just wanted to bring that up to everybody. I don't think we have that compiled in one space, and I'd like to take that project on and bring it to the board subsequently.
Put it together and bring it to us.
Huh?
Put it together and bring it in.
Yeah. Judy?
There is some information in one of the bylaws about it, just so that you need a starting place.
We've got bylaws, we've got charter, we've got policy. It's interesting. I mean, if you've got a couple of different vacancies on the board, you know, something we've... I don't think we've actually thought about previously, but you've got to figure out, you know, who's going into what slot here so that we can keep our rotations straight. On the committees that have five members, remember, we're supposed to have two, and two we appoint one year, two we appoint the next year, and then one the third, to try to keep it as even as we go forward. We have one board where, obviously, somebody goofed way back when and got out of the 2-2-1, and now that we've got a 2-3-0 board. In the third year, there's no appointments, because there's two in the first year and three in the second. So, you know, yeah, exactly. So, I think it would just be helpful for everybody if everybody's on the same page, if there's one document and one checklist that everybody's operating off of, then I think it's just going to be better for everybody. So, I'd like to bring that forward. Alan?
I think it's going to be easier rather than a selectmen's policy, because we have a tendency to get lazy with that and not be consistent. We already have a bylaw on the books as far as the selectmen have the ability to basically vote to terminate a member who has shizzily moved out of town. I would much rather see us go ahead, put something together that's actually a revised bylaw that covers all of it. It's there, it's locked in, and that's the end of it.
I think... Well, I think the bylaw accomplishes what it's supposed to.
But it's only one piece of the whole thing.
Well, you've got some in the charter, too. You've got a removal, you've got the whole... The hearing process is in the charter, but the "you moved out of town" thing is in the bylaws, which...
But there's other pieces in the middle of, you know, qualifications. We don't have anything for that.
Yeah.
You know, how many meetings actually are we going to insist people go before you? Years ago, let's say years ago, like eight years ago, 10 years ago, used to be you had to go to at least three meetings before you do anything. You know, there's just a lot of things that just... If we put it all together in a very simple bylaw article, it's clean. The office knows what it is, the town clerk knows what it is, the Board of Selectmen knows what it is. Right now, you've got three to four different organizations dealing with this, and there's no consistency.
Yeah. Well, what I'll do is I'll write something up, and you know what? If the board thinks it's adequate as a policy, that's fine. If they'd rather see it as a bylaw, we can put it on a warrant and use it as a policy in the interim.
Yeah. My vote would be for a policy, just as a bylaw, because policies really, at the end of the day, they don't hold much at all.
Well, the bylaws don't either if we don't read them all the time.
If we don't read anything, then nothing matters.
And speaking of which, there's a 10-year review of that coming, and that's what's supposed to be coming up, too.
There's really such things as a 10-year review.
Judy?
It's also mentioned in the volunteer handbook about removals and, you know...
Remember, the handbook's just a guide.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying... I'm adding to Alan's comment that it's in several places, and that's one of the places that it is. So, if it's in several places, those several places ought to say the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should say the same thing. They don't need to say it in five different places necessarily, because that's when law gets confusing, is when you've got to go to multiple sources for it.
You know, can I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it doesn't matter what they say. If we don't enforce what they say, then... Everybody just kind of got lax about it. Someone say, oh, that person left. Oh, it's okay. Depends who it is, you know? Someone who's a director in a department says, oh, this person left the committee. Okay. So, we take that for granted. We let it deteriorate ourselves as much as anyone.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know...
Yeah, I'm being careful. You know, again, this is a systemic problem. We're part of it, too. So, let's fix the system and make it work for us, and make it so that everybody knows what the expectations are, what the requirements are, and, you know, when the office ticks off all the boxes, they know it's time to go on an agenda for an appointment. I think it's important.
Can I ask a generic question here? What methods of enforcement do we have to require groups, organizations, or individuals or ourselves to follow the charter or the bylaws?
You last with a wet noodle? I mean, it's not a crime to violate the charter. The charter theoretically would be enforceable in a court of law by us, or somebody aggrieved or attends citizens if they wanted to, but it's not something that typically, you know, doesn't get litigated over generally.
Through you, the...
Yeah.
Town council?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's theoretically possible to... First of all, it would depend on the nature of the violation. But assuming somebody was not doing something that they were supposed to do, you could bring a mandamus action. If there was a question about whether the charter required a particular action, and there was disagreement about whether the requirement was there, you could bring a declaratory judgment action. And then pursuant to either of those sorts of claims, you could bring a motion for preliminary or permanent injunction. The thing is, is that the charter does not in and of itself have enforcement mechanisms.
Correct.
Correct. It's like a bylaw without a fine.
Well, yes and no. I mean, there's...
Some sense.
You know, there is an element of moral suasion to it, to the extent that anybody is morally swayed by anything. So there is that. And then there are certain parts of the charter where the language in the charter is directory rather than mandatory. For example, and I wish I could put my finger right on a perfect example, I can't at the moment, I'm sure I'll think of it on the way home. But, you know, where the policy is, where the charter is suggesting a policy course of action, you know, it's hard to call a strong suggestion law. That's called directory language. You're not really, "You ought to do this." That's directory. Mandatory is "thou shalt." Mandatory is what Moses came down from Mount Sinai with. You know, that's mandatory stuff. The rest of it's, I'm not going to go there. Stop.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this? I'll have something for you folks next week. Discussion regarding earth removal permit notice and enforcement during land use permitting process. This was sort of Jim's baby here. He would like us to figure out a way to get the land use boards to look at the projects and make sure that if there's going to be any dirt removed, that A, they get permitted for it, and B, we got our money. So, Jim?
Well, I think the simplest way is that before permits are issued, that the issuing authority for the permits, which I believe would be inspectional services, for most of the actions that would take place to remove it, would give them a copy of the bylaws and just tell them that the project that they're doing will necessitate filing the earth removal permit. I mean, it's just, it's something we have, but it's not implemented. So, I mean, either that or you should just get rid of it. So, I mean, who the heck knows? So it needs to be part of the process, and I think the best place for it is personally when they go to get a license, or as you suggest, possibly at the boards that are granting the permits, to say, "Hey, this triggers earth removal."
Because what's our, what is our limit before you need a permit? Five yards or something like that?
That's what it says in there. You've got to go through the bylaw, but the main thing is that we have to have someone to give the proponents for these projects the information and say, "Look, you're triggering that, and you need to fill it out," and then it comes in front of the board.
Yeah.
I mean...
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind, when is it triggered on a, on like a building or something like that?
Yeah, if you're digging a cellar hole, is that, is that earth removal?
Retro, have you heard it? Have you looked through it?
Yes, I have, and I had it right in front of me one half second ago, and then I hit the wrong button, and it moved. But I just, so here we go. Listen.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, this is from Section 3 of the bylaws, titled Required Permit and Exceptions. And I'll just read it. Except as provided otherwise in this bylaw, no earth shall be removed without the issuance of a permit from the Board of Selectmen as the granting authority. Now we get into the exceptions. As part of and set forth in such permits shall be the restriction forbidding excavation to a depth below the mean grade of an adjacent serving street in the immediate vicinity of the street. This bylaw shall not apply to the moving of earth materials under the provision of a duly approved subdivision plan to work necessary for the construction of streets and the installation of utilities to such work in connection with the excavation and grading of land incidental to construction of a duly permitted structure, not to work performed in normal construction, maintenance or improvement of land in cranberry-related activities, or other agricultural use. So, that's a list of the stuff that it doesn't apply to. Everybody else, get your permit.
And that's moving, not removing, correct?
Let's see, it does say moving, and...
Not removing.
Well, in the beginning of Section 3, it says, except as otherwise provided in this bylaw, no earth shall be removed without the issuance of a permit. And then it goes on to list what the exceptions are down below. Now, so, you can do some of these things without the permit, I read them off, but if you're doing something else, just get the permit.
Just, so we're clear on what "removed" means? Would you say that that means being removed from the premises where the work is taking place?
Of course.
Okay, I just want to get that out there. Because I can remove a shovel full of dirt on this part of my yard and put it over there. So, we're using removal in the sense of bringing it off premises.
Excuse me. Well, I can tell you that plenty of times when you put a septic system in, you have to remove material.
Yep.
Sometimes you bring some back in, other times it leaves completely. Most of it is, and sometimes even contaminated, as it leaves the site. I mean, you can't ask somebody to put a septic system in their yard and get a removal permit in order to take the material either way, whether it comes in or out. And plenty of times, it comes in as much as it goes out. But there's always some, you know, if you don't have any place to put it.
Yeah, there's some displacement when you're doing it, so something's going to happen.
Displacement, right, exactly. You know, so, and the same thing when you're building a house. I mean, you have to dig a foundation hole, and you have that material. Now, sometimes it works out okay, and you have room to spread it in the yard, and everybody I know does that. Nobody would take it off-site. I think what Jim's trying to get to is the people that are doing rather large projects, and then all of a sudden, they say, "Well, you know, I got this big gravel hill over here, I think I'll sell it." Or, "I got this big loom over here, and I think I'll sell it." And they do that, and absolutely, that's wrong, and you need to have a permit for that. How do you get to that is going to be a little tricky. I don't know exactly how we're going to do that, but we probably could come up with something.
Jim?
Again, the permitting of boards and the...
Inspection services?
Inspection services. They're the ones that issue the actual permits to start construction, or to start a project. And that's where it should be implemented. Say, "By the way, what you're doing is going to require an earth removal permit from the Board of Selectmen." I mean, unless we require every applicant who's going to do work that's, comes under the bylaw to come in front of our board, you know, beforehand, so...
No, that would be unwieldy, we couldn't do that.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's what I'm saying. So, we have to have a process. There's no process. Either that, or let's just, let's do away with the quarter. You know, and, I mean, if you want to...
No, you're right, Jim. I mean, it's really, really, it's really, look, everybody does it. Every town, Jim, does it. Every town charges or has a thing to remove material. A lot of towns don't even let it leave town. You have to take it someplace else in town. I mean, this is not uncommon. I think you're right. I mean, look, we did it at the school. The school, we just took a lot of material out of there. You know, for one, it had to happen. It's easy enough to figure, it's way up on a hill. The hill had to come down, the material had to go somewhere. Fortunately, I think most of it went across the street to somebody who needed it across the street, so we were sort of lucky that it stayed in town. But if not, it would have been removed, it'd gone.
But it was removed, just went across the street.
Well, we were lucky that it went across the street, but that's not, that's not, you know, it could have left town completely. I mean, if they, if they didn't have a guy across the street, they would have shipped that out of town.
Did he pay for that?
The guy across the street? I don't believe so.
He paid some.
Besides, I believe because it's a municipal building, we're not, we don't have to pay the quarter, but...
There you go.
But it serves as an idea of what could happen, you know, when you're building a big building and stuff, so...
Yep.
I would just like a process put in place.
Do you want to work with council on coming up with a policy and to get the boards involved?
Do you need a policy?
Well, you need to send something to them to make it more, you know, that's the policy.
To the boards, we do, but to employees, we could just do it through our direction, through our town administrator, I believe.
That's true, but administrators change, not that Derek's going anywhere, Derek, don't let me kid you, but administrators change, and a policy would probably be a better thing, if we had some kind of policy.
I think Attorney Bowen wants to speak to this.
Yep.
Oh, there he goes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure the Director of Planning will love me for suggesting this, but...
I'm writing his name down right now.
Since he has the overview of how all these different land use boards work, it might be worth getting his suggestion as to how this could be circulated or imposed as a checklist. They must have some kind of checklist on some of this stuff that could be added to it, but he'd be in the best position to tell us how it works now and how this should be added into what they do.
You're right.
Probably a great idea.
Yeah. Alan?
Since I was on the planning board for a while, the easiest way is basically when you're doing a site plan review. ZBA has certain things where they do a site plan review. Conservation gets involved sometimes as well. So if you have something in place that, on their list of final approvals, they have to have something coming back about soil removal, it'd be the easiest way at the end of the day.
Yeah, I think asking Ken's a great idea, you know, don't you think?
Yeah, well, Ken's involved with all three boards, but I'm just saying, if it's on their checklist of what they have to get to sign off on.
Yeah, and I know certainly for planning, they, you know, for every project, right on the cover, they've got a sheet stapled to it with a little thing they, you know, check off, you know, the abbot's list, was stuff sent out, yada, yada, yada. So it's all there, so it's just a matter of adding a slot on there, you know, earth removal policy.
You know what? That'll work. That's just wonderful, and I don't know why we didn't do it before, but I'm in full agreement.
Okay, good.
As long as we can get that done.
Yep. Well, let's, you want to talk with Ken and come back and let us know whether you want a policy, or just start doing it.
Mr. Town Administrator has that look.
Mr. Town Administrator?
There you go.
Yeah.
You ever thought about this?
No, I'm just saying, I think we should look at the bylaw as a whole. It looks to be a pretty, and not do away with it, but let's, let's look at some others in the area, because I looked at Middle Boroughs, and theirs gives, well, it's construction permit, they have something like 800 cubic yards per four acres or something like that. You start looking at it, because right now, we've got, it's kind of a, it's, ours is kind of...
Hard to read.
Yeah.
It's a little muddled, is it?
And the moving, and the moving versus removing is, yeah, is, you know...
We're creating a distinction we may not want to.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, for me, moving is just, it stays on-site, and you move it, and you're... Removing is you remove it from the site. I think it's pretty, for me, it's clear, but, you know, that's just me. And you're right, to really understand it, you just can't read that one little paragraph in Exceptions. You have to go through it, because then it starts to explain when it takes effect.
Yeah, when it's triggered, yeah.
Right. And I think, you know, we want to figure for, we don't do an open-ended permit. What if we permit something, and they don't actually do the construction, but they start stripping some of the land away and toss it or something like that, you know?
Yep.
It's after a few years. Like, let's say, we gave a permit to the 40B, and for whatever reason, they didn't do other phases, but just kept on using it as a mining operation.
Well, I think we have to, in those instances, if you're doing it under a permit from a construction permit under inspectional services, then the removal has to be limited to construction purposes. You can't just, you know, not build your thing and start a mine.
So I think, I think we have, and I'm sorry to interrupt, so I think we've got short of the short term, but in the long term, I don't think that this needs to be rushed into, you know, those, I think the initial part, we can certainly work on and stuff and get that going, and then, but look for the future.
Patrick?
You know, Jim thinks that moving it on-site is sort of the difference, if you move it across the street or whatever, but being familiar with some of these from many towns, being worked in these things over the years, typically, I think if you go through these, their bylaws, you're going to find that most of them only want the material to stay in town. They don't care if it goes to another lot that it gets used for, but they do care if it leaves town completely. You know what I mean? Typically, that's what they're looking for, is to keep it in town. And, but if you want to make it the other way, that's okay too. I'm just saying that that's typically what I see as I've been going along, that, you know, and you have to tell them where you're going to put it, by the way. You can't just say, "Well, we're going to take it and put it in town." You can't do that. You've got to say, "I'm going to take it here, and it's going here." You know what I'm saying?
Got to have a destination.
Specific, oh, yeah, you've got to know the destination, everything.
That's, you know, I understand what you're saying, and what Mr. Sullivan's saying, I think, and I'm just trying to get the bylaw we have implemented, so that it's, if someone's going to do considerable amount of work and remove material...
I agree.
You know, and it's, they're selling it. If it's good material, then, you know...
Let's have at it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to squeeze everyone. I think to trigger it, what's it say, five yards or some...
Pretty small.
Ms. Chairman, what it says is that you can remove earth without a permit on a subdivision plan if it's five yards or less, but once you go above the five yards, you're treated just like any earth remover, and you've got to come in and get a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, so it sounds like this is a, it sounds like a two-prong approach?
There's a small dump truck, yeah.
Yeah, it's a standard pickup truck with two-foot sides built all the way around, gives you about five cubic yards.
That's a pretty small amount. It's a pretty small amount.
About 15 wheelbarrows, it's not a lot.
It's a pretty small amount.
Four hours or one man's job.
Yeah, it's a pretty, five yards is pretty small.
For the record, I just spoke without the microphone on, and Bob did not catch me, so...
My book is in the book.
Oh, it's in the book. You're in the book.
So I think, Mr. Select, and...
Rich is in the book, too.
I think there, I'm calling it sort of the Phase 1, Phase 2. Phase 1 is what we just spoke about, implementing through the planning with the Planning and Community Development Director, and then a Phase 2 out in the future if we want to review the bylaw and make any changes.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll figure out a way to get the ball whirling then, and going on that. Okay, anything else on that, or?
I'm good.
Good, okay. Vote to approve license agreement with EverSource for DeKalb Mine at Forest Elementary School Project. So we gave them a fuel storage permit last week for the gas, but now they need an electrical permit.
Okay.
So that's what this is about.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0-0. Okay, we have vote to ratify hiring here. The only correction I have is that Mr. Zajak is going to be an EMT, not a lab technician at WPCF. I was, the Director of Personnel reached out to me and informed me of that, that mistake on the, on this, so...
Yep.
He's going to be an EMT?
And he, he's in, he's going to be a paramedic in EMS.
Oh, okay, all right, so that's what it is, all right.
I move to ratify the hiring of Gerald Malidi, laborer at WPCF, Sean O'Brien, lab technician at WPCF, and John Zajak, paramedic at EMS.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion to ratify by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Any discussion? Good?
Yeah, I went there.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0, it's unanimous. Continued discussion of votes to recommend warrant articles. You don't have any new financial information, do you?
I don't.
Okay.
I do not.
We'll slide on past that. 48-hour business, well, we know we've got two. First off, I would ask for a motion to require masks be used in public meetings.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion, Alan made it, Judy second.
Yep, okay. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0-0. Second one is to vote to request the Board of Health consider a refuse regulation, is that what we should call it?
Yep.
Yep, so moved.
Okay. Motion by Patrick, second by Judy. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0 on that as well, thank you. Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some good news. The, I was at the recent Mayflower Municipal Health Group Steering Committee meeting via Zoom, naturally. What some people may not understand is, or know, is that our, we vote the rates, two different rates during the year. The first one that goes by fiscal year is for the active employees, and then retired employees goes by calendar year, because that's a MedEx program. And I'm happy to say, it looks like the third year in a row, they'll be holding the rate stable for MedEx, and it's MedEx with a PDP plan at a total of $378 per month, which is fantastic.
Wow, that's great.
And it looks like the assets that will be within the Mayflower Municipal Health
And it looks like the assets that will be within the Mayflower Municipal Health Group are totaling a little bit over thirty million at this time, which means it looks like we'll have stable rates going into the future. So it's been one of the, one of the best investments we've made and I know, uh, Alan can speak to it, but the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, is the one who approached us on this and, uh, made the pitch. And I think, I think everybody knows how much I hate paying out money for anything. But before this, when we were self-insured, at our low end, we were looking at eleven percent increases and that's what, what we'd been going through annually. So by joining this consortium, if you will, um, the, you know, Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, helped us out dramatically and it's been a great boon for the town. So this year, our rate increase was two percent for our overall health insurance. And given with what we're seeing in the next year, you know, when, um, I can't say it would be the same, but it's going to be, we're going to see some savings and we will not see the same increases as the other municipalities. So they've, they, they've done a fantastic job and I want to tell you how much I appreciate him getting us involved in this and then the board and the, uh, everybody taking the actions to actually allow us to join because at that point, after the previous health insurance holiday, we were upside down with the employees. The town was going to have to put, literally put cash into the trust fund as well and this ended up saving us. I'll tell you, it's, it saved us on the projections, millions of dollars at this point.
I was going to ask you what, what the savings has been, millions?
Yeah.
And until by how many years?
So we've been in there about five years, I think, now. It's, it seems less, but I think it's almost.
That's great.
Five years, so it's been, it's been fantastic. It's good, it's not only been good for us, but for our employees as well. They have some excellent plans and you can choose from the, the, you know, the crumb de la crumb to the, the others with higher deductibles. And we see people migrating as their lives change and, you know, if you don't want to pay as much, you, you can choose a lower, lower plan. So it's been excellent for us, so.
Alan?
When we, this first became, you know, Mayflower became notice and stuff and we brought it to the town, uh, we were sitting with the, as Derek said, we had that trust fund and the, the employees were in fine shape. The town was several million dollars, I believe, underwater as far as their share, even though the total amount of the fund covered the actual requirement, the problem was the ratio was completely out of whack. And I believe Derek confirmed it and I think the first year we signed up with them, we saved the town six hundred thousand dollars, which was a huge benefit because of everything going on. Also, we have basically the insurance, we have the uninsured, you know, liability and stuff. Mr. O'Brien also has a program there that saved us a lot of money as he put money into it. And I would ask this board to, you know, generate a letter just thanking Plymouth County and especially, uh, Treasurer O'Brien for the excellent work they've done helping this town out.
Yeah, because we had, when we, we basically bought into it and they had one large year of adjustments, but we already had been on adjustment schedule, so we were able to absorb it and it was still, we're still trending so much lower than what we were before. I had anticipated that at this point in time, we would have been looking at the towns portion of it. Just the towns alone, where we're about eight million, including, uh, including dental, I'd factored would be over ten million if we'd stayed self-insured, so.
I think when we were with Plymouth County, we were, uh, we were seeing rates of ten to fifteen percent every year and increases. I mean, it was crazy, the healthcare, and that's why we ended up ultimately going to self-insured.
Yep.
Because we, at the time, we saved a ton of money. But then, you know, sort of the wheels turn and, and the wheel falls off.
Yeah, been slow.
Exactly, you know.
When you're a, when you're a small group, like a single town, when, when you're, when it goes badly.
Yeah, when it goes bad, it goes bad and we had a lot of problems. We had a lot of, uh, cancer patients and so on that really kind of killed us, you know?
Yeah, I'll tell you, that time before we moved over was one of the, one of the worst times because you'd, we'd, I'd have to go through and you're looking at the, you wouldn't get the names, but you'd know there's high exposure, seeing the illnesses and everything going on and realizing, you know, the, the, what's going on with people and.
Yep.
And it's the costs associated with it, I mean, it's, it's, it's really amazing and one of the, one of the big factors impacting us nationally, so.
I just want the board to approve writing a letter that both we and the town administrator sent a letter, thank you.
Let, uh, let him sign it. Chair, sign it.
Chair and the town, and the town administrator.
And the town.
Derek's on the finance committee for Plymouth County and he's been very instrumental in getting things done there as well. So we need to recognize that as well.
I'm on the steering committee, don't, don't.
You're on the finance steering committee.
That's fine.
I'm on the executive committee, doesn't mean a thing.
Okay, so what, we got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, I, I appreciate it. Um, one thing, I'm just, we know there's been a lot of ballots requested, mail-in ballots, but we're still looking at Tuesday being, um, you know, Tuesday, November third being a tremendous turnout for, for voters. I mean, going to, you know, and Town Hall has at least two of the, uh, the, has two of the precincts in there. Uh, if you can go ahead of time, please do so. And, um, I, I'm thinking in the back of my mind how to handle the Town Hall that day uh, with just, with the employees and the amount of people going, going through there, so.
I think you, you might wish to consider having the employees park, I, I don't know if you, if there's somewhere else they can park to free up some parking space out there because I think parking space is going to be at a premium. Uh, I mean, I'd love to give them a day off, but you'll kill me if I say that out loud.
What I'm thinking is we might be, um, you know, there might be some requests for some people feeling very uncomfortable to use some of their paid time off to not be in the town and I don't know how much work would be getting done on that day. So I might, uh, anybody that's looking for a paid time off, usually you try not to have it so it impacts services, but I really, I don't want to see as many people going in and, um, and sticking around, uh, after for town services. We're trying to move people in and out.
In and out, in and out.
So, um, if something, you know, if there's any ideas, I'm, be glad to hear them. Otherwise, I'll, I'll give you, when we're getting closer, some of the, the thoughts of what I think of doing with the, the employees in the building allowing some, what they want to do with the operations, so. We might, you know, we might get people saying, I have no problem with it, but I know there's some, uh, there's some that have some legitimate medical concerns and such, so.
I was just making a motion from this board that we allow the town administrator, uh, the latitude if he would like to give the people the day off paid. This is unusual circumstance we're dealing with between COVID and the way people are voting and everything else. And I know there are a lot of people who are nervous on both sides of the plastic as far as, you know, the actual pandemic and stuff. And I think, uh, I, I would be happy to err on the side of, uh.
Safety.
Safety, basically, and I know people may be very upset with me saying we're spending money unnecessarily, but something like this, I think is more critical than anything else.
I'll second that.
It shows the employees that we really care also.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it, it, what do we have, we have a presidential election, what, once every four years? You know, I wish we had those problems during town elections. Everybody, everybody likes to complain, but then they don't show up and vote, but they will show up and vote this time, we know that, they already have.
Already have.
So.
Yeah, I think just with, um, I really appreciate the sentiment and I think just with some of the, um, bargaining elements, if you will, I think it would be allowing them to use their paid time off would be a better mechanism and would not reverberate throughout some of the others that don't have the same options and things such as that.
I think this is really in your purview anyways.
Good call.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's, I just want, as the board select, I want to give you a heads up, some of the things we consider.
Would you say take time off, paid time off?
Paid time off.
It's stuff that's accumulated?
Yeah, if you have vacation time, you can use that, if you.
Personal days, that kind of stuff.
So.
Yeah.
So my thought was just say, there may be some service interruption that day and wanted to let you know, really.
Well, it's, you know, I think what we can do is, we could, we can certainly get the word out that, you know, Town Hall's going to be inundated with voters. It's not the best day to go in and pay your tax bill or pay your sewer bill or go to the clerk's office looking for stuff. I don't believe the clerk's office is going to be open anyway, that's going to be shut down, it always is for our elections. They don't wait on people that day, you know, you can't get your risk certificate, you have that stuff then, so. But I think for the other offices too, I, I think just to caution people, it's going to be very busy and, you know, do us and yourself a favor and pick another day to go there to do your business if you can.
I was surprised by how many Town Halls are still not open, that they're doing appointments only and, uh, you know, I gotta really speak to our employees that when it was time to go back to full schedules and things, that, you know, there was not. Other towns had, uh, multiple grievances, had things and not, not there's anything wrong with that, it's a process, but they, um, they went through a lot of headaches and our employees are ready to step right up and come back in. I, I gotta tell you, that's.
Lot of them not open.
Yeah, and so I think we've got a really special group, uh, across the board from, uh, you know, Town Hall, the, our public safety, that they were the ones that, when everybody else was, uh, working part-time and, and such, they were still out there and, uh.
Municipal maintenance.
Yeah, municipal maintenance, they've been, uh, you know, once the, their schedules were adjusted, they came back in, they're doing, you know, they're fantastic, they're the ones cleaning. So we, we've got such a great group, and it's, uh, I'm really proud of them, so. Seeing what's, you know, some of the things we've seen in other communities, that I think it, it should go a long way to tell you and the, the, our residents and taxpayers, how good of people we have working for us.
We do. Alan?
Uh, again, I had a meeting today with the Mass Select Board Association. We have a president, first vice president, second vice president, secretary and five regional representatives. Uh, we are the only board that actually meets face-to-face. Everybody else is still meeting by Zoom and I can tell you, out of the sixty-plus communities that I represent, there's maybe five that are meeting face-to-face, everybody is still on Zoom. So we are an anomaly and, you know, we have the ability for people, if they want to come in, they can talk to us and we're basically doing something that nobody really is doing. They expect people to most likely have, uh, face-to-face and Zoom next year as a standard procedure, figure out how it's going to work IT-wise and everything else. So, you know, we've actually gone back to making this as best as possible for everybody. So I think we should be pretty proud to be able to do this and none of us have got sick by doing it.
Yep, well, not that we know of.
Come on, Wood.
There was, uh.
A while already.
Give me some wood.
I was, I, there was a sort of a chat from some of the, some of the area managers and then it went out, hey, we're closed, what are you doing for a lack of people? And about the six communities talking about how they're still closed and doing appointments only, I thought, oh my God, I'm a monster. I really haven't opened, but it's, yeah. But it's, uh, we talked about it and that's one of the things, we are, all of us are, uh, you know, we're, we're public servants, where it comes down to it. And I think having us open and available to the residents goes a long way towards making things easy and, and, you know, calming for, for everyone, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, you know, when people are doing business by telephone and everything else, you know, if there's the, the person's on the line with somebody else, you know, you call, you can't get through, you leave a voice message, you know, it's, it, it's obviously a lot easier to do it in person. Uh, and, you know, for, for a town that doesn't have a lot of resources, uh, we, we have a lot of people who work in businesses, essential businesses, uh, work in stores, work in nursing homes, work in the hospital, uh, so on and so forth. They are, um, you know, considering what we have for a population and what a lot of them do for work, I think it really is a testament that people have taken it, the virus, pretty seriously in this town because our numbers, when you think about it, uh, we're not, we're a town in name only in some ways. Uh, our population sometimes is, it seems a little bit more urban and if you look at where Massachusetts has had trouble, it's been in the urban centers, more, more so than elsewhere. So we, we've got, we've got the, some of the urban dynamics here, but yet we've managed to keep fairly virus, comparatively virus-free. So I think that's a testament that people are taking it seriously too. Knocking wood? There you go. Okay, anything else under your report?
No, I think that should take me forward for the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, you can, you can refuse, as we say. Uh, Liaison Initiative reports, Alan?
Uh, real quick, uh, I met with, uh, the East Coast Greenway Group and the South Coast Bike Way Alliance and, uh, we are going to be meeting with a Solomon Group, which does grants, et cetera, uh, to see if we can get some assistance in the bike path that's been approved for twenty twenty-four for us. Uh, we'll be on one portion, which will be basically Mattapoye to Warham. Then there'll be another group on the same thing, we'll be talking about their area from Fall River to Nevada. So I'm trying to come up with ways of, coming up with money for the state's extra requirements that we never knew we had to expend, so. I'll see how it goes there. As I said, today's, uh, meeting with the LGAC was really no new news. They just talked about eviction, everything else, which they gave everybody last week. I basically sent everybody that, what we, what we did discuss today. I think the only thing that was interesting worthwhile talking about to understand is that the state has actually put a plan in place where they'll be able to do three million vaccinations per year. It's already all been put together, it's ready to go as soon as the vax, a vaccine is approved. So that's pretty good considering what everybody's sitting in with nothing in place. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
I'm all set for tonight.
Judy? Jim?
I just want to, um, comment on, um, the technology the, uh, excuse me. The planning board's using, they're doing a, a hybrid Zoom in-person meetings. And, um, a little glitch the first week, they lost audio, lost the signal, but, um, it works pretty well and, and when they're presenting the, um, plans, Mr. Mr. White here is, is nice enough to put the camera on it. So then the proponent, when they're talking about it, if you're sitting home, you know, watching the planning board, we're actually able to see it, you know, it, what everybody else is seeing instead of being back too. So that's good and then using the Zoom aspect of it, engineers or citizens or anybody who would want to participate could still participate and not have to physically be here. I, I find that, uh, the use of the technology good and I, I give him, you know, thumbs up on it and, and thank him for that and, uh, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, um, do have a, um, recycling meeting tomorrow night. It's recycling at six, hopefully I don't have a conflict. But, um, they're, they're another good group and, uh, I want to just thank them, which I thank for all the groups I work with, they're good, all the committees. Good.
Thank you. This, this, uh, this is kind of neither fish nor fowl, uh, but I figured I'd bring it up under this category. Uh, we've had a couple of requests from restaurants looking for relief from liquor licensing fees uh, for the time that they weren't able to be open. And, y- you know, the issue I, I would have with that personally is that we had a two trillion dollar federal relief package and a lot of that money was, you know, earmarked to go towards businesses that had to close and so on and so forth. In its infinite lack of wisdom, the federal government has yet to do a damn thing for this town or this state uh, in terms of, of helping out us out with our diminished receipts and everything else. So I, I don't see how it's really something that we can do, but I, I, you know, said I would poll the board and just, just get thoughts about it and if, if, you know, a majority of you are interested in going forward with this sort of thing, we can, we can set something up for it. Alan?
I guess my question first would be, are we talking about the fee the town gets or the fee that the state gets?
Well, we can't waive a state fee, so it would be our licensing fee.
Okay.
That's, that's what they're, they're asking, so.
I don't know what we can do legally and I'd, I'd ask the town council to take a look at that as well because what's the ramifications if we do it?
Yeah.
I, I can't.
I'd be uncomfortable discussing until I know.
Yep.
What the results would be.
I, I wouldn't be interested in entertaining it if you're looking for a thing, I wouldn't.
I was just looking for just a sense of what the board thinks. I'm seeing heads shaking, so.
Nothing I would entertain.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think if you did something like that, you can't do it for one, you'd have to do it for all.
Open up a Pandora's box.
Every business would be asking for something.
I would, uh.
Exactly.
If anything, I, I'd need to see the financial impact on the, of, of the reduction on the total as, uh, Mr. Bowen indicated, you just can't do it as a, I mean, unless you, you did it just by, everybody had to request it, that wanted it. But, um, you know, it just, it's more work for everybody.
You see Derek grab his chest.
Yeah, Derek's starting to turn purple over there.
He grabbed his chest, I noticed. He went like this, he kind of grabbed his chest a little bit like this.
I think the, um, one of the things is, if you remember back, we, we went with, uh, Mr. Sandborn, talked about the CDBG going for the micro enterprise. We teamed up with Rockland and a couple other communities to have a better shot of getting it. So if you go to our town website, we, you know, we, we've been awarded to be able to do it. So they're, they're calling it the Rockland Regional Micro Enterprise Grant Program and it's COVID nineteen relief grants up to ten thousand. It's not for everyone, you have to be. It's not for everyone. You have to be, it, it, it's not just a, an owner of the business in the community, but you have to be a, a resident to qualify, and it's certain number of employees and such. So it's, it's not the easiest thing to qualify for, but take a look. I mean, it, it's worth it. Go to our website, and if you go under the, uh, News and Announcements, you'll see right there, Rockland Regional Micro Enterprise Grant Program. There's been press releases on it. Uh, take a look. There, there's a lot of information. There's guidelines and applications. Again, it's not the easiest thing, because that's, one of the unfortunate thing of the CARES Act was they said, hey, here's all this money we've given you. Now we're gonna give you enough guidelines so you can't spend it. But that's, uh, yeah, that's been sort of the interesting portion. But, you know, recommend that. Maybe some of them will qualify, may, maybe they won't, maybe they're out of town, uh, you know, or, um, or a big business or something, but it's worth it.
What, so what is the fiscal impact? Could you provide that to us, like next week or something?
Liquor licenses, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if the people are, I mean, they're open for business now, so there's no, if, if, if an establishment chooses not to have their bar open presently, that's, that's their decision. Um, so I don't, I don't know that that would.
They can still sell alcohol, and they're still doing takeout alcohol, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll kill them. Right. What, did that change?
Till November first, right?
November first. Yeah. No more, right?
After November first, he hasn't extended it yet.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that's made up for anything. We, we understand. I mean, the summers are, is our biggest draw for a lot of these businesses and alcohol and such. I don't think the liquor stores did badly, but the, uh,
No.
you know, the, the restaurants, it was a different matter.
Nothing says we have to give them fifty percent either.
Yeah.
No. Okay, thanks. Um, I'll, I'll respond to the, to the, those who inquired, uh, and direct them to the grant program.
There's also Peter Seed, is a group out of, uh, I think, over in Taunton, uh, that has programs for businesses, if they need loans or temporary things to help out. And I think also they should look into their local Chamber of Commerce's, because a lot of times they'll have some programs that can help out as well. There are, there are options.
So, so what, what are you doing on that, Peter, Mr. Pedalbaum?
Well, we had a couple of inquiries, uh, from a couple of establishments asking if we would think about it, and I, I just wanna respond to them and say, you know, I checked with the board, they didn't seem too excited about the idea, but here's a couple of avenues you might wanna explore for yourself, and just refer them to the.
Yeah, well, I think we're still kinda looking at it. I mean, I, I can't make decisions on things without seeing what the impact is.
I saw enough, I saw enough head shaking that this dog won't hunt. Yeah.
Not opinion at this point, but okay.
Exactly, thanks. Okay, I, uh, let's see, I don't have anything else. I don't think we need to pay the lawyer tonight, so, Alan?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion by Alan, seconded, tied, Patrick, Judy. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you, Warham. Be safe.